Welcome everyone here tonight to our March 20th, 2023 County Commissioner's Board meeting. At this time, I would like to ask Vice Chair Barbie if he would have the implication and the pledge of allegiance.
If you will, this is our heads. Heavenly Father, please guide and direct us tonight in the decisions we have to make. Help us to make true and just decisions for everyone in the county. We'd like for you to please bless our law enforcement, first responders, firemen, our school teachers and county office. Please look after our military, their families and help them get home safe. And Lord, please, please bless our nation. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
At this time, you should have the agenda in front of you. Anyone have any adjustments to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion we approve the agenda.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries seven mo. Public comment. I didn't have anyone that signed up for public comment. Are there anyone out there that would like to speak in public comment? Okay. Thank you very much. All right, our next item is National Therapy Animal Day proclamation. Our presenter is Commissioner Lawhan and I think via proxy, he gave it to me. Everyone should have a copy of the resolution. I'll be happy to read it if you'd like. I'll just go ahead and read it then. Let me just read it real quick, Peter, if you don't mind. Whereas there are thousands of pet therapy animal teams serving in communities across the United States, whereas Pet Partners Inc. has designated April 30th as National Therapy Animal Day, and whereas pet therapy animal teams in the town of Stanfield play an essential role in improving human health and well-being through the animal, the human animal bond, and whereas these therapy animal teams make countless visits per day, excuse me, per year in settings such as hospitals, nursing homes, schools and hospice, and whereas these therapy animal teams interact with the varieties of people in the communities, including but not limited to veterans, seniors, patients, students facing literacy challenges and those approaching end of life, and whereas these expedition therapy animals who partner with the human compassion bring comfort and healing to those in need, and therefore be proclaimed. The Stanley County Board of Commissioners recognized April 30th of 2023 as National Therapy Animal Day in Stanley County and encouraged citizens to celebrate our therapy animals and their handlers, and the Board of Commissioners publicly salutes the services of these animal teams in our communities and in the communities across the United States. Adopted this 20th day of March, 2023. Most pleasure to the board.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the proclamation as read.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Shudo. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. 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 Motion carries seven mo. Thank Commissioner. Our next item is King Avenue Parking Lot Bid and Budget. I'm in on our presenter's County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As you know, we've been working for a couple of years now to create a parking lot across from the courthouse to generate additional parking spaces for folks that are using that facility. The county's received informal bids from prime grade grading contractors for the proposed King Ave parking lot. Per Chambers Engineering, JTR submitted the lowest responsive informal bid at $419,513. This does include a $50,000 contingency line on them. The county included $300,000 in its 2223 budget for this project. A portion of those funds have been used in engineering and NCDQ permitting. So right now, there's a total of 286,651 still available. So it's recommended the county accept JTR's bid of 419,513 and amend the county's existing general fund operating budget by $132,862 to cover the full project cost. So I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have. There's some maps in here of the parking lot that Stevens designed per the Historic Resources Commission's of the city because it had to be approved by them. So it had to have a certain number of trees and it could only be a certain number of, it had to be a certain number of feet off of Second Street sidewalks, other things we had to do per the Historic Resources Commission approval. So, and this has been the, after that's been done, they, we have gotten all the approvals we need from the City of Albemarle to move forward with the project.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for County Manager Lucas?
Maybe you said, how many spaces we'll have to?
I want to say it's in the, I think initially, we wanted to do 68 there, but I don't think that number, I don't have the number committed, Peter. I'd have to, I'd have to count them. But I think it's less than 68 at this point.
Zero.
Yeah, I want to say it's in the high 40s. And obviously, we have the lower side of that property that maybe in the, in the future, depending on, you know, how the upper part works and the city's need for, or their perceived need for additional parking, that they may allow us to do, do both at some point in the future.
I make a motion we approve the funding of the project.
Okay. A motion, Commissioner Shudo, a second by Commissioner King. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. 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 Motion carries. Thank you. Andy, when, when would they start that?
Um.
Do you have a timeline?
I would think at least 60 to 45 days for mobilization. So I would, it'll be, it'll be later this fiscal year, I would think, end of April. I'd be hard pressed to think they get it done before the end of the fiscal year, and so we may have to come back and we'll either have to put, push funds through into the next fiscal year or come back and have you set up a project budget.
All right. Thank you. Next item is Department Presentation Solid Waste, and again, our presenter is County Manager Lucas.
Okay, I'm going to do the monthly department head presentation this evening for solid waste. So we'll go ahead and get started. What solid waste does, they operate our convenience sites, annual household hazardous waste event that they hold annually out at the Aggreg Civic Center. They partner with Keep Stanley Beautiful. They partner with the City of Albemarle Landfill, and they carry out the county's solid waste ordinance. The convenience sites, there's a total of nine convenience sites that serve the unincorporated areas and residents. Five of those sites are open five days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday and Saturday from the seven through six on weekdays and then seven to four on Saturdays. Those five sites are Baden, Bethany, Newt Road, Corner Store, which is down below Stanfield, going towards the county line, and Norwood. And then we have four sites that are open four days a week, Monday, Thursday, Friday and Saturday, same hours, Aquadale, Austin Road, Millinport and Richfield. The convenience sites, they're residential only, and so these are the folks who pay on their, that when, when they get their annual tax bill, they, there's a line item on there for the, to use the convenience sites, household, household waste fee. And so those folks actually pay to use the, to use those sites. And you'd be surprised how many folks who don't pay that fee try to use the convenience sites, and our guys are, you know, pretty good about it, you know, recognizing folks that they see. The problem is if everybody used those convenience sites, it would fill up the trash faster. We'd have to dump the trash more, which adds, only adds the cost. So we really try to, we really want to focus on just the, the folks that are using that be the folks who actually pay that fee. No businesses, churches or nonprofits are allowed to, to use the convenience sites. They're designed for normal weekly household garbage and recycling. They're not designed for somebody to bring in a big huge couch or a queen or king sized mattress, you know, carpet, recliners. They're not, that's not what they're designed for. Those should go to the landfill. It's not to say it doesn't happen and doesn't say that someone doesn't sneak a twin bed in there sometimes if the guy in the thing's not looking, you know, and it's not to say that if someone comes, goes and cleans out, you know, somebody's house and has five or six bags of refuse or just miscellaneous stuff that they want to get rid of, that they won't let them throw away. Now, if somebody pulls in there with 40 bags, they're probably going to tell them, no, you can't, you can't take, we can't take all that. Again, the issue is it fills up the compactor or the open top, then we have to dump it more and that just raises the cost. So we, they encourage those folks to take those items to the Albemarle landfill. We do accept motor oil at all sites, up to five gallons. We do accept used electronics at the Newt Road site, and so you, if you have a TV, VCR, tablets, basically, you know, a computer monitor, they will accept those things. They'll take them out there and then they, they palletize them and then shrink wrap them, and then they, vendor comes and gets that, that stuff once they fill up a pallet full of the electronic goods. So we do, we do accept those at Newt Road, so if, you know, folks want to get rid of those things, you know, obviously, they can bring them to the annual household hazardous waste event. They can also take them to the landfill, but if they, you know, if they're looking for a place where they can take it during the week and don't want to go to the landfill, they can come to Newt Road. We also do used white goods, washers, dryer, stoves, things like that are also accepted at the Newt Road site. So recycling, recycling is available on a commingled basis, aluminum and steel cans, newspaper, cardboard, plastic jugs, bottles, magazines, catalogs, telephone books. We do not accept glass. It's just one of those things where it's really, it's, it's difficult to get anybody to want the glass in the commingled. As part of that, I guess it creates real problems from a processing perspective, so we don't, we don't accept glass. And but the other, all those other items are welcome at all of our convenience sites. All of them have the ability to collect that and you just put it all in one big bin. We also do accept antifreeze at three sites on a continual basis. Austin Road, Bethany and Newt Road will, will always be able to handle antifreeze if you're looking to discard of your antifreeze. There is an annual household hazardous waste event that's open to all citizens. So this is, everyone in the county is able to come to this event. It's Saturday, April 15th. It's usually the second or third Saturday of every, in April every year, nine to one. And you can see the accepted items, most electronics, pesticides, your fluorescent bulbs, household batteries, acids and bases, aerosols, drain, drain openers, furniture stripper, paint, paint products, all that stuff that normally won't be, can't discard anywhere else, you can bring to that household hazardous waste at no cost and drop it off.
Is that at the Newt Road site?
Yep, that's at the Newt Road site. Yep, the Aggreg Civic. It's actually, they don't, they don't do it at the Newt Road site. No, excuse me. They do it in the back parking lot of the Aggreg Civic Center.
Oh, okay.
So they set up big bins and truck, the vendors come that, that are going to take that stuff away. They set up and it's just kind of a drive-through. There'll, there's lots of folks from our staff and from the City of Albemarle who actually helped facilitate getting all that stuff out of folks' cars or vehicles, trucks, whatever it may be, so that keeps the line moving. They partner with Keep Stanley Beautiful. They attend the meetings, take minutes, participate in cleanup events, assist with organizational paperwork to help them with their nonprofit status, and we do provide grant funding of $1,000 a year to Keep Stanley Beautiful, to assist them with covering some of the costs associated with going out and doing these pickup and cleanup events. We also partner with the City Landfill. Some of the funding for scrap tire and the white goods actually flows through our budget, goes to the city, the, the part that we don't use for white goods at Newt Road to help offset those costs for them through the state grants. So they will accept scrap tires and white goods at the landfill. Any resident can take trash, recycling or bulk items between Monday through Friday, 7:15 to 4:30, and then the first Saturday each month from 7:30 to 12:00. They used to be open on Saturdays all the time, which was very convenient, especially folks who work, you know, you could get out there early Saturday morning and get rid of some stuff, but unfortunately, now you got to time it, and so you're, that, that first Saturday. There's no charge for white goods, aluminum cans, cardboard, scrap metal. They charge $30 a ton and $8 minimum on yard waste, $15 a ton, $5 minimum on batteries, glass, paint, plastic containers, rigid plastics, ink cartridges, mixed paper, and then $125 a ton, $15 minimum on tires that are larger than 20 inches. And if folks have questions, the City of Albemarle Land, they can call the City of Albemarle Landfill, and the number is here, 704-982-3302, with any questions about what the landfill will accept. But it's, it's pretty easy. If anyone's ever been out to the landfill, you just drive across the scale, they weigh your vehicle coming in, and then they weigh it when it comes back out, and they just stop you and pay, pay the fee depending on what your, what the weight was of the, of what you had. So it's, it's, it's not a real cumbersome process out there. And then the other thing that the solid waste department does is they carry out our solid waste ordinance. This is a complaint-driven process, so our guys aren't driving around looking for solid waste issues. Same with planning and zoning, building inspections, it's completely complaint-driven. They can address solid waste as is defined in our ordinance, which would be hazardous or non-hazardous garbage, tires, white goods, bulky waste such as furniture, stumps, large tree branches, large auto parts, appliances. But our ordinance doesn't address the storage of non-garbage items, which some would have called junk. And so, and sort of that old adage that one man's junk's another man's treasure, and so there are things that we get all the time where, you know, this person's yard's junky. I mean, if it's got solid waste out there, we can address it through our solid waste ordinance, but if it's just junk, you know, a bunch of kids' toys in the yard and six or seven swing sets and, you know, some windows are stacked up or, you know, there's really, that's just, it's really not household solid waste. And so there's really nothing we can do per our ordinance to, as it is today, to really address that unless the board were to change your ordinance, and then, you know, that creates slippery slope items too, because, you know, how, where do, how far do you go? But certainly, you know, if you wanted to tighten up your ordinance and make certain things fall under the definition of solid waste, we certainly are, are open to that. So, but anyway, they do, when folks complain and file a complaint with solid waste, they will go out, check it out, and then they will write a letter. Hopefully, the individuals will work to get it cleaned up. If not, then we work, Todd will work with Jenny and they'll do a letter, and typically, when the attorney writes a letter, that some, some folks get motivated to do something. And then there are also our civil penalties that we can assess as part of our ordinance. And that concludes, well, I do have one more slide with some statistics. The materials handled at our convenience sites in 2022, 6,000 or 6,300 tons of household trash. That was actually down from 2021. 380 tons of recycled material, 3,000 gallons of used oil. We filled three 55 gallon drums with oil filters, 23 tons of electronics and 34, almost 35,000 pounds of household hazardous waste. Most of that stuff, other than electronics, was down from the year before. We actually saw a huge increase in late 2020, 2021, when people were at home because of COVID. All of a sudden, people were looking for things to do when they were home and they started cleaning out their stuff. And we saw a huge run on our convenience sites and, you know, folks were bringing all kinds of stuff. We're like, whoa, whoa, we can't accept that stuff. But it was almost a weekly occurrence. I was getting a call from somebody complaining because the guy at the convenience site wouldn't let them drop this off or wouldn't let them drop that off. And I'm like, you know, that's, that stuff's got to go to the landfill. So, so it's not surprising that our statistics are down because we, we saw it shoot way up in 2020 and 2021 when more folks were home and they were looking for things to do. So, but overall, just annually, I'll look at our statistics and see sort of how we measure up, you know, recycling, household trash. We're, we're, we're sort of in the middle, you know, county, county across the state, and we fare fairly well with counties our size in terms of total trash and the amount of money, amount of, amount of recycling we handle. So I'll be, I'll just stop there and answer any questions that I can. I may have to follow up with, if I can't answer your question, I may have to follow up with Todd and get back with you.
Any questions for County Manager?
I just comment, I was looking for a place to do for a workday. Easter break's coming up, so I think I'm gonna.
There you go.
Go to all the different convenience sites. I'll let you know so you can let them know.
Well, you just, yeah, we're just calling Todd, title coordinate with you.
Okay.
Get you set up. Yep.
Hey, Todd says the, the facilities out there, I've had a couple of citizens all complain about the ruts or things in the driveway where they, like especially Stanfield. I've got several complaints about the one in Stanfield and one in Norwood.
Yeah, just if you've got issues, let Todd know. They try to stay on top of it, especially like big potholes that'll form. Stanfield's a really tough one because it's that corner store and it's just, it's like a postage stamp, and that's a heavy use site. We've actually been looking for some additional properties. So if you're aware of anybody that has property in that area, we would, I mean, we, we actually looked across the street, there's a, there's a lot there, but people weren't willing to sell it. We actually went up the road and talked to some people that had some land about maybe a half mile up the road, and they weren't willing to sell. We would love to have, you know, a couple acres where we could do more in that part of the county. That, that site is really, but if there's, if there's issues like.
Does the county currently own that site?
No, we do not own that site, right? Corner store? We lease that site. We would love to own our own site where we could do more with recycling and really have more like a Newt Road type, you know, have electronic recycling, household goods in that part of the county too. So if you all are aware of anybody who has, you know, land in that part, we, you know, we don't want to get too far away from there because we want to try to keep it, but, you know, I think, I think that would be a wise investment on the county's part because that, that site is, one, we lease it, and two, it's so, so small, it's really difficult to get in, get in and out of there, and the ingress and egress is not great. It's right there at that intersection. But if, if there are issues with potholes and ruts and things like that, just let me know and I can let Todd know. He, he's usually pretty good about getting that stuff filled.
That, that site's a challenge because you're going up into it, then you're driving down off of it, so, yeah, and everybody's turning back toward Stanfield and it, it does rut it out some, but.
Yeah.
It's a small site.
It's, yeah.
I've checked it around with some folks and, you know, I think it'd be nice to have a bigger site.
Absolutely.
I'm sure it's used pretty heavily.
Yeah, it's, it's one of our heavyest, heavyest used sites. It gets a lot of use, so.
Any other questions, County Manager?
I figure the household hazardous waste down 40%, that's a huge number.
Yeah, but again, it shot way up during that, the COVID, well, you know, when people were, had to, couldn't, you know, whenever, all the policies were put in place to do, you couldn't do stuff. They were at home, and so they brought a lot of stuff. They were, you know, looking for stuff to do, so they cleaned up, so.
That's a good thing. Thank you very much, sir.
Yep.
Next item, item five, consent agenda.
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner Shudo, do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. 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 Motion carries. Seven mo. Board closing comments and announcements. Commissioner Lawhan, I'll start with you since you're on the phone.
Okay, no comment.
You gotta be kidding me. You serious?
No.
All right. Thank you, sir.
The only comment I have, I appreciate you for letting me do this by phone.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
What you're doing out there in the world's important. Thanks, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Hatley. Vice Chairman Barbie.
No comment.
Brandon.
No, everything good.
All right. Peter.
Not going to stop a good thing.
Man, I'm telling you what. All right. Just kidding about the good, I know you never have something.
You know I've got something. All right, I won't drag this out too long, but I do want to report on the fact that I, I went to the Centralina Regional Council meeting, the executive board meeting on March the 8th. So I got, I was volunteered to this group, and I have been learning what exactly I'm supposed to be doing in this group, but it was, it was a good meeting the other night. I was very pleased with what happened. Actually, Centralina, for anyone who doesn't know, it says, this is a group, it says, since 19, I think it's 66 or 68, Centralina Regional Council has served the greater Charlotte area by providing services to individuals, supporting local governments and leading regional collaboration. We strive to make a difference in seven fundamental areas. And that's like aging and health, community economic development, local government support, natural resources and so on. At this meeting, we, the Charlotte area is actually the largest for the whole state of North Carolina, and it takes up about 40% of the share of our congressional representation. So it's a large group, maybe nine counties come, and so lots of different commissioners were there, city council members, mayors from different towns. And one of the items that was on the agenda, it was actually part of the consent agenda, and I dare say if Brian Helms had not pulled it off, he's a commissioner in Union County, it would have just been passed probably because no one else was going to pull it. And it was approval for the U.S. Aging and Disability Vaccination Collaboration Vaccine Grant Award. And I know I've talked about the vaccine a lot, and I really don't try, want to go talk about it too much, but this is very, very important because this was part of the consent agenda, and it was about approving almost $300,000 to go into the homes of our elderly and our disabled population and vaccinate. The goal was 2 million people. And he, he was severely concerned just because in light of all of the information that's come out, of course, about the safety and the lack of efficacy. And so I seconded his concerns. He spoke very eloquently about his concerns. I seconded him, and it was amazing because I was in a room full of people that I, I really didn't know what they were thinking. I don't know if there's more Republicans or Democrats, or I don't think it's even a partisan issue. This is just about people and, and health and doing the right thing. And what happened was we had incredible conversation. We didn't all agree with each other, but it was respectful, and it was exactly what needs to happen in a room like that, that is often not done because people check the boxes. You know, we have just, we just go into these places and we see a consent agenda item, and I think that we have gotten into a habit of checking the box because there's so many things on there, and sometimes we don't even understand what we're looking at. And so it takes a lot of humility to say, hey, I don't understand what's going on. I need to ask some questions, follow up with people, and that's what happened there at that meeting. And, and actually, at the end of the night, we had a majority to rule that we didn't want to accept that money. So $300,000 now will not be coming into the area to vaccinate 2 million people. So I'm, I'm not saying that to be controversial. I know that there will be people that disagree with me, and I get that. But I felt like it was a win, and what was a bigger win was when we left, people were shaking each other's hands, and we were saying, hey, that felt good. That felt like we were doing what government is supposed to do. We came in here to do a job. We talked about things and we felt like we, we made a good choice. So anyway, I just say that, you know, we're just as good as our yeses and nos up here. We can say yes and we can say no, and after our four years, that's what we're going to be judged on, so that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Commissioner. The only thing I have to say, I want to, you know, give a special thanks to Commissioner Hatley and Commissioner Lawhan for their hard work at the Animal Protective Services on doing the AstroTurf. Trent, I don't know how much work you got out of Bill, but I certainly appreciate you letting him hang around with you.
He was our honest assistant.
But I appreciate you doing, I appreciate you doing that and taking time out of your day to do that and lining up whoever donated the AstroTurf and stuff. I certainly appreciate it. Our next meeting is April the 3rd.
Was that Easter? Was that April?
No, it's before.
Okay.
It's the week, Good Friday will be that Friday.
Okay. I was going to wish everybody Happy Easter, so I'll just wait. All right, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Vice Chairman, second by Commissioner Crump. All those in favor say aye. 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 Y'all have a good evening. Thank you. Motion carries.[1786.14]